Okay, your last.
Good evening. This is the June 26, 2024 meeting of the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals. We do want to just hold for a couple of minutes. We do need two more members to either arrive here or dial in. We believe they're both supposed to be in attendance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. Calling to order, the June 26, 2024 meeting of the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals. As always, if you want to watch virtually, you can dial in at ma.southborough.civicplus.com/674/virtualmeetings. So, the first item on our agenda tonight is Sixth Parker Street. Laura, do you want to read the notice?
The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing at the McCallum Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Wednesday, June 26, 2024, at 7:00 PM with regard to the petition of John Cage, Sixth Parker Street, Southborough, Mass., map 3, lot 8. The petitioner is seeking a special permit and a variance to allow an alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming structure that will encroach on the side setback. The property is located in the Residence B zoning district. Relief is requested under Section 174-9E, Section 174-8.3D, 3C, and Section 174-8.3D, 3A.
Thank you. Do we have somebody here for the applicant?
Yes.
If you could please introduce yourselves.
Just to note really quick, I also have Jason Kurtz on Zoom.
He is on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, my name is John Cage.
Hold on one second.
Sorry.
Let me just get sidetracked. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Barry O. Crimmins of 909 Washington Street in Stoughton. I'm here on behalf of the applicants who are with me here tonight. Before you, John Cage and his wife, Hannah Hyde. As was mentioned, I believe, our project architect, Jason Kurtz, is online as well.
I'm here.
And Jason can speak to the proposed addition. Before he does, excuse me, I just wanted to give John and Hannah an opportunity to tell you what it is that they're doing, why they're doing it, what they're looking to accomplish by means of this addition.
Thank you. Thank you. So, we're looking to tear down the existing garage. If you are not familiar with it, it's on the plans and such. The existing garage was built around the 1970s. It's too small to actually fit a modern car. And a hatchback actually could fit in there, but it couldn't open the doors. So, there's also a number of other concerns with the garage that was pointed out when I purchased the house about 12 years ago, dealing with the rafters and the roof. And so, we're looking to remove the garage and install, build a new garage that would be, of course, larger and more accommodating to a modern car, as well as expand the house to add a bedroom, bathroom, a second bathroom to the house as well. If you're not familiar, I'm sure we have not met any of you maybe thereabouts. But my wife and I have two kids. We also have custody of my niece and nephew and my mother-in-law all live at our house, as well as two dogs and a cat. So, a single bathroom in the three bedrooms we have is kind of a cramped situation. So, we're looking to expand that.
As, if I may, Mr. Chairman, as John mentioned, the house was built right around 1800, 1803, according to the Assessors' Office. Like many houses built in that time period, they lack what would be considered conforming setback under current bylaw. Thus, the house is considered a pre-existing non-conforming structure under Chapter 48, Section 6, as well as the provisions of yard bylaw, which of course more or less track the language of Chapter 48, Section 6. So, it's a proposed addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure, as well as, so we're asking for a special permit for a finding from the board that the proposed addition would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure, as well as seeking a variance for the proposed garage due to encroaching into the side yard setback. With that, Mr. Chairman, if I can see if Jason is able to join us and is able to pull up the plans, hopefully to show the proposed addition. Jason, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, guys. My name is Jason Kurtz. I'm the architect of record, 168 Middle Road, Southborough. As John alluded, the desired demolition for the structure is a fairly modern, we'll call it based on the historic terms, structure, one-story structure that we're looking to demolish and replace with something that is much more structurally stable, as well as aesthetically pleasing to the existing, or the original home. The style of the structure that's looking to be torn down is, has nothing to do with like the 1800s style of architectural design. And what we're looking to put in its place relates back to, without trying to match it perfectly, it relates to the 1800s. So, that way, it's at least, you know, giving a little bit of semblance to the structure and while not alluding to it, trying to pretend that it was built originally. The, as Barry had mentioned, the front yard setback is pre-existing, and that is what the special permit is pertaining to because it's, we're just looking to continue that extension along the front yard setback being non-conforming. We're actually setting it back from the existing house, so it will be set back just slightly from the existing house, a little bit further from the front lot line than the existing, but it will remain as a non-conforming on that piece. In terms of the side yard lot, due to the width of the house based on its placement and the width of the lot, in order to create a structure that would be able to house a modern car, we're going to need to set inside of the existing, or inside of the side yard setback line. The existing structure that is there is just shy of the existing side yard setback line by a few inches. And so, we were looking for the variance piece that would allow us to move into that side yard setback line. The board should have all of the photos showing the existing structure, as well as some aerial photos showing how the lot is adjacent to, it's adjacent to a corner lot, and there's no structures between the homeowner and Southville Road. There's, you know, a couple of small, there's a lot next to them, and there's no structures around them. And then, there's Highland Street, and then it goes over to Southville. So, there isn't any, as Barry alluded to, it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. There isn't any impact on the neighbor's lot by going inside of the side yard setback line for this particular lot. And going much further towards the rear is challenging due to the topography. There's a lot of granite and stone on these lots. We're anticipating that there, you know, because there's a retaining wall that a lot of the area behind the retaining wall is, probably has some large stones just based on the existing area and the neighboring lots from renovations and work that has been done. And then, there's also the septic system in the rear that kind of prohibits a lot of it from just going narrower and longer to the back.
Mr. Kurtz, did you have something you wanted to present for, to be reviewed, or you're just relying on what's been submitted?
There's nothing new that I have that hasn't been submitted.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do the members have Jason's plans either in hard copy or?
We, yeah, Ms. Davis has put them on our SharePoint site, so yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Let me just ask the board, does anybody have a need to have them up on the screen? Or is everybody familiar with what we looked at already?
I don't need to have it on the screen.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so I think we could probably go. We've all taken a look at them.
Okay.
I understand 100% the, you know, the paragraph about topography and shape. This is very clearly, we don't do lots like this anymore.
I didn't know whether you wanted me to go through the statutory requirements or not.
Well, I would, you know, the board in general is pretty familiar with existing non-compliance. When it comes to something like this, you know, there are factors that come into play, but obviously, like you said, the topography, shape of the lot really come into play here. Was there anything more you had to present, or can we have the discussion here?
We'll be happy to respond to any questions the members may have.
Okay, all right. Paul, we'll start with you. Do you have questions?
I don't really have any questions. I kind of, I get what's going on here. I follow. So, I did see whatever the email from Laura that there's, you know, with this setback, does this, I don't know, does this require anything from the Board of Health to sign off with the septic tank?
Well, I think that's a, I did note that procedurally, Jay, I mean, is that something that we actually have to note in a decision, or is it, they have to go through those boards anyway?
They're gonna have to do it anyway. You could always just have a simple no, shall comply with any and all requirements from, of the Board of Health under Title V.
Right, and the same thing with historical, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
So, that, so I would, like was just said, I assumed that was gonna go in front of the Board of Health, so probably it's, no need to go in front of the Board of Health, unless we're saying it's, there's a variance.
Right, I know. I think we've done that in the past, but it's sort of, I think it's not necessary. If that's part of the process anyway, we're sort of stating, next steps you have to take anyway.
Right.
Okay.
And, you know, the typical of there's any neighbors that have objected, which I have not seen or.
I'm a neighbor. I'm the one who abuts their property. And I think that's great, what you're doing.
Sorry, 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 just procedurally, if you could, we can get to you, but we'll just need you to identify yourself and go to a microphone. But just hang on a minute, if you could.
So, yeah, so to finish, like if there's any neighbor comments or objections, that's always interesting to hear, but otherwise, I'm following and I'm good.
Okay. Doug?
Yep, I have no questions or comments at this point.
Okay. Mike?
I have no questions or comments. I understand the project.
Okay, yeah, it is well understood. I think I've already raised, you know, we all understand the plot. The questions I had were the procedural ones that Mr. Talman's already addressed. So, actually, ma'am, if you would like, if you want to say something on behalf, you're welcome to. I would just ask you to identify yourself at the microphone. Yes, please.
My name's Michelle Hannan. I live at 3 Highland, but my corner lot abuts their, their lot. So, I think that's great, what they're doing. I just want to make sure that in the future, there wouldn't be any problems, because they said they'll only be five feet from my, from my property line. I need it in writing that there, say, somebody, if I sell the house, there won't be a problem. If somebody wants to put a fence up there, there won't be a problem. If somebody wants to put, because I could put a driveway in there, plus that lot has my septic in it also. So, I just want to make sure, and I need it in writing, that there won't be any future problems.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not too sure what would be, what would be a problem for your property?
Who's to say, you know, if I go build a fence?
Yeah.
Or somebody builds a fence. Oh, it's close to the.
Who's somebody?
Me, or, or if I sell the house.
Okay.
Well.
Do you want to see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but if you, I mean, if you're gonna build a fence on your property, it's gotta be where a fence is allowed.
I don't know that. I don't know the, I mean, I'm pretty new, I'm only six years into the town.
Okay.
So, I don't know what.
To the best of my knowledge, like this, this would not, this would not impact what you can do within your parameters on your lot. Because there, it's, if, if they're putting a garage that's a little bit closer to your lot, that wouldn't mean that, oh, you can't put a fence, and it's got to be 10 feet from a structure from the neighbor's.
I don't know.
Like what's on the neighbor's land is, I don't want to say irrelevant, but is not, does not impact what you can do on your, on your land and property. So, if you wanted to put a fence, you're allowed to put a fence where you normally would have been allowed to put a fence. Where their garage sits would not, would not impact where you can or can't put a fence.
Okay.
Or where a future owner of the property, you go to sell your property, your property is not.
Okay, so that five, I just want to make sure, because I know, you know.
Your property is not impacted by, you know, there's no, geez, I, you know, sorry, I can't put a fence on my property anymore.
I can't do that.
I can't put a garden on my property anymore, because, geez, these neighbors of mine put a, moved their garage too close, so that's.
No.
Yeah.
It's all.
If it encroached on your property, well, that's another story.
Yeah.
But this is not encroaching upon your, upon your property.
I just don't want anything, I'm trying to think of anything in the future that could happen.
No, I.
That a problem would come up.
Right, I understand your question and the concern.
You know what I'm saying, yeah.
But yeah, there's, I'm not an attorney, but just note, there's, there's, there's nothing that would, that would be on, as long as it's within their property, it's nothing that would impact something within your property.
Within my property?
Correct.
Okay. So, why does it have to be a certain feet away from my property line?
It's just the rules and regulations.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's just to keep things from being overcrowded, and that's why they're here today to get a.
Right.
To get a variance or whatever, because if there was no rules and regs, then someone would, if there was no setback required, and someone would put something right up to your property line, go two and a half stories up, and then you're like, that just blocked my view. I can't bark out of my driveway, because I can't see anymore.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand. But I'm just kind of looking in the future, you know, just anything that could happen. I just don't want any issues.
I understand that.
To arise.
Just as the attorney, as an attorney, just two things. We can't really put in our decision something to restrict that. The petitioner is here to say, hey, listen, we're looking for relief under our bylaws.
Right.
We can either, you know, approve or deny it. Sometimes we can approve it with conditions, but something like an unforeseen event in the future, we can't kind of write into a decision. And also, let's just say someone, let's say like there is an encroachment. There's nothing on tonight's decision that would, would change your rights if there was an encroachment onto your property. So, your property rights are unaffected by whatever happens tonight. So, those are gonna stay the same, just from a baseline.
Okay.
Just so you can feel better about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's great what they're doing. They're wonderful neighbors. It's just, I just.
You want to make sure it doesn't blow up?
I know how things are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
This discussion will be in the minutes, right? So, that, that might go towards your in-writing request, if the discussion is in the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, yeah, Ms. Davis does a really good job with the minutes, so I'm pretty sure she'll capture the nature of all of that.
And it's on tape.
It's on tape, which is definitely undeniable. But, but yeah, just to emphasize what Paul and Mike have said, like this is only on that property. It doesn't have any impact on yours.
Is there anyone else who wanted to?
That is a question. Is there anybody else might want to? No? I happen to know you're a neighbor. If you could, yeah.
My name is David Moakie. I live in 3 Cottage Street. So, we're a couple houses down. Fully support. I have no problems with any.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Moakie.
This is here for support.
Yes, okay. Okay, and if there's no other public discussion, I think we're probably ready to take actions.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made to close the public hearing with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Okay. So, having closed the public hearing, I don't think really, we didn't have any questions, so there's really nothing to debate here. So, again, if somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance as applied for, or something like that.
I'll second that.
Just to note, there's also a special permit.
Yes, there's a variance and a special permit.
I, I will also add to my motion to accept the special permit.
And I'll add to that second.
Okay. Motion to approve the variance and special permit. Is it a variance? Both, yes. As written, has been made.
That can be made with one motion, right? It don't have to be a separate.
No, I think we do every one. Those in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Your petition is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. All right. One. Let me get back to where I was. Oh, my goodness. I just have to get.
That's fine. So, we have 14 days to write and file the decision with the town clerk.
Yep.
Once it's filed, there's a 20-day appeal period. If there's no appeals, once that appeal period's over, you can pick up certified copy, record it. I typically have them done prior to 14 days, but up to 14 days.
I mean, technically, they have much more than 14 days in that this was the first night, but.
True.
I know that they aim to get, get them out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is 77 Deerfoot Road. Do you have a public?
The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing at the McCallum Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Wednesday, June 26, 2024, at 7:15 PM with regard to the petition of Ellen and Michael Moorhead, 77 Deerfoot Road, Southborough, Mass., map 34, lot 1. The petitioner is seeking a special permit and a variance to allow an alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming structure that will encroach on the side setback. The property is located in the Residence A zoning district. Relief is requested under Section 174-19 and Section 174-8.2D, 3C.
Thank you. Do we have somebody here?
Mr. Chair, as a point of order, I do want to just disclose I am a proximity abutter to the project. I'm at 49. I don't know the petitioners. I don't really, but I did want to just disclose that.
Okay.
I don't think it's a conflict by, by any standard, but I did want to disclose it.
Yeah, no, thank you for bringing that up, Mike. I appreciate it. My interpretation, certainly Mr. Talman would. certainly Mr. Talman would probably understand better, is there's no clear benefit to you. So, I, I think as long as you're, you're made public here-
Are you a direct abutter, or in a butter to within 300 feet, or you just live in the neighborhood?
It's probably just over 300 feet. I'm at 40, 47.
Right, but is there, is there a lot in between?
There is.
Be a butter, so, so you're not, it's not a technical conflict?
I don't think there's a technical conflict, but I did want to raise it.
No, you're right to disclose it.
Yeah.
So, if you feel it, you can act impartially.
I feel I can act impartially on this.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, yeah, sorry, go ahead. If you could just identify yourselves.
No problem. Yes, thank you for having us. I'm Michael Moorhead, and my wife Ellen here. And you have the presentation that we can show. So, thank you for having us. It's been a long time coming for us. And we have a same, similar situation that, as a previous applicant, we're seeking a garage addition for our home and a special permit and a variance into that setback. So, we've got a few quick slides here that we can walk you through, the, the story and the project and the, the house itself. This is our house. It was built in 1840s, and for the longest time, it was the homestead of a farm, up to 70 acres. And across the time, that, that acreage was, you know, worked, worked, pulled apart.
Go to the next slide.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Then, and so here's, speaking of the house, again, it was the homestead of the, the farm. It had barns and silos all throughout. It was 70 acres. It was 30. The, mapped out, the drawing down on the bottom is from 2002, when it was a, an A and R was, a proven not required, was submitted for to take the last seven acres that the house sat on and divide up across the five lots that you see. Again, the barns, you know, were there probably before the automobile was invented, so the house always had a place to store, store a car once they, they came along. But seeing the history of this and having done the research that we've done, we believe that, you know, what happened was they got to the seven acres and they divided the, the lots, and they took the minimum amounts around this house. It's 150 frontage. It's 26 and 27 on the side yards, and they found the minimum, you know, acre. So, they did that, and then they maximized the other three lots on the, on the south, and the, the north lot has one buildable spot on it. So, that, you know, leads us to believe that the, the notion of a side yard setback for this, or a side yard for this house was recent. So, so, time went on, those other lots got developed. The house, as you see it in the top-left picture, the house with the double chimney and then the L next to it, there's a sunroom that's next to that, and I guess, oh, hold on, hold here for a second, Laura. The sunroom, we believe, was a, an addition sometime in the 1930s or so. I believe it was probably even the next-to-year space that just got enclosed. It leaks thermally, like I said, so it's-
Go on to the next slide. Yeah.
And it, yeah, faces, faces south. It gets beat with sun all day long. It's, in the wintertime, we have to run the heat just to keep the pipes from freezing. The deck is out the back of that sunroom, which is also set to be torn down with this. The deck's falling apart. Even structurally, there's some Band-Aids that we've put on over the years. Wintertime is brutal. It's, you know, gets, gets fumbled with snow, and sweeping the snow is not a problem. It's clearing the cars. But all the other, you know, houses around the neighbors, the other seven or eight on our portion of the street, they've, they've all got their garages as well. So, I think if, again, then go to the next, Laura. So, what we're looking for in our, our special permit and variance request, this is an image of the, the house on the left with a garage addition overlaid on top of it. And if you squint real hard, you can see the, the sunroom in the back. The plan on the right, you can see the triangle shape coming into the, the 25-foot setback. The thick black line is the property. The 10-foot is the accessory setback, and then the 25-foot is what's bisecting the, the garage. So, you can see, we're really just coming into the corner of it. We're asking for the, the 14.4 feet. The retaining wall that you see in the plan is the retaining wall in the picture. That's about three feet off of our property. So, we're still, you know, far enough from the, from the neighbor. And there's our neighbor on the left in their garage as well. They both, this neighbor and our other direct abutter have both given us letters of support. We've walked them through it, shown them what we're doing, and shown them these images as well. We've also been through historic. We had to go through them for the teardown of the sunroom, but they were on board with everything and even caught on to the fact that we're trying to replicate the barns that were once there and make this look like this garage was always part of this house, that it was, you know, part of, part of the 1840s feel. And the stream is running in the back. We've also gone through Conservation Commission. So, that's why the, the house, the garage wants to be where it is on the site. It's at the end of the driveway. It doesn't want to go back any farther. It wants to thermally wrap up this sunroom and make this a current-day house. So, that's what we're up against. And that's it. All these, all these other images, we have the full plans or anything. If you need to see anything further on in them.
Sorry, can you go back a couple slides? Right there. So, you're, are you lot number two in this picture?
We are lot four.
Four.
Lot four.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I got it.
And so, you can see, the house allows you to orient yourself. Deerfoot is to the right, going to the north. Route 9 is to the left on the plan.
Right, okay. Okay. Yeah, I think I've got it. Thank you. Paul, any questions?
Not, not really. I seem, I follow what you're getting at. I see what you're doing. It makes, makes sense. I understand the aesthetics. I see that you've already gone in front of historic, and they're kind of on board with it or, or what have you. So, I don't, I don't have a lot of questions. I mean, it's, on that one slide, it says it's a one-story garage. That looks to be a two-story to me.
One, one and a half, yeah. I mean, it's-
Yeah, it's got a-
It's, there's space-
...story with the knee wall and-
There's, there's space above.
And all that.
Yeah, it's, it's-
But I don't, I mean, that doesn't really make a difference, but it-
Yeah.
It is kind of two stories.
And the, and the site drops back, and so it's taller on the back anyway. But from the, from the street, it's, it's one and a half story.
You know, same type of questions. If there's, you know, apparently there's neighbors of butters, don't have a, an issue with this aesthetically. It's not bothering anyone. You know, I don't, it's, I, I get it. It's whatever, within the 25-feet setback. I don't think this presents any type of public safety concern or snow plow removal. I mean, you're still far enough back. I mean, we've seen things that are, you know, that are closer. Is the house, the house itself, is it, is it all with, is it all outside of the 20?
No, the, well, the portion that's non-conforming is actually that front porch.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that-
Yeah.
So, it's, you already have something that's-
You're, that's the special permit. Yep.
I mean, I, I get it does, you know, I see what you're doing. It looks, looks good to me.
Okay, thanks. Doug?
Well, the only question I have is just more curiosity. So, is the, is the area above the garage occupiable? So, there's the garage level, and then there's just a finished room, or what's above the garage?
We're not planning on finishing now.
Yep, just curious.
Above the L is, is a finished room, and we will, that we'll be able to connect.
Okay.
Yes, there were grand plans before the budget got a hold of it, so.
Yeah, but we are, I mean, hopefully, maybe one day we'll be able to finish it.
Yeah, just more, I was just curious, because again, I was just asking, it was, you know, it was two stories, and then, but yeah, no, I don't, I think it makes sense. I mean, I think the design looks good. It's great that you have support from your neighbors, and Historic Commission has signed off too, so I don't, I don't have any comments or questions.
Mike?
I have no comments or questions.
I, I, I do want to say I appreciate you already going through the Historical Commission. We've been in this position before where that didn't happen, and it gets uncomfortable. So, I am echoing the rest of the board. I, it, it makes perfectly good sense to me. If your direct abutters are in support of the project, then it's pretty hard for us to see why there'd be-
Sorry, one of them actually might be dialed in at 79 Deerfoot. Siddhartha, pearl color? Yes, I was just gonna- Okay. Sorry. Yep.
Yeah, I was gonna allow-
Okay.
If there was anybody in the public that-
Sorry for the interruption.
No, that's okay. If anybody from the public wants to, wants to speak.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Can everybody? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, yeah, we live in 79 Deerfoot Road. It's been almost five years for us here in Southborough, and Ellen and Michael have been great neighbors, and we fully support their extension plans. So, no issues from our end at all.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
No.
Anybody here? Nope, okay. Hearing none. I think we can probably take the usual steps.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
All right, motion to close the public hearing has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Stumbled it from the back.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Right? Again, having very little discussion, I think we can go directly.
Yeah, given the shape, size, and topography of the lot, the current limitations, I make a motion to approve the petitioner's request for a special permit and variance as drafted.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
There you go.
Aye.
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Thank you.
Did you see that? Approved, yes, I did.
Thank you so much.
Momentarily distracted by lightning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to continue? Oh, there it is. Yeah, and that, I mean, the same thing applies. They're, they're going through the necessary boards. Right, so, okay. All right, the next item we had on the agenda, if we're ready to continue, is 250 Turnpike Road, 40B application. Do you have a public notice to read?
I do. Okay. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing at the McCalliv Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Wednesday, June 26, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. with regard to the petition of FD 250 Turnpike Road LLC, 250 Turnpike Road and Zero Parkerville Road, Southborough, Mass., map 27, Lot 46. The petitioner is seeking a comprehensive permit under MGL Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, and 760 CMR 56 to construct a 56-unit apartment building. The property is located in the Residence A zoning district.
Thank you. So, who do we have? Familiar faces for the applicant, I see?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members, staff, town council. I'm Brian Charville, the Chief Operating Officer and General Counsel for Ferris Development Group. Here is lead counsel for the applicant, FD 250 Turnpike LLC. I'm joined by David Ferris, who's a Southborough resident, Southborough native, and the principal of the applicant. Also, Louis Levine, our outside special counsel, my associate George Bonham, and our civil engineer, James Tetro of Asmath Land Design. And also on the team, although they're not here tonight, are Kristin Costa, who's our 40B consultant, as well as Monte French, who is the project architect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Actually, I, I recalled, I was, I was just gonna make a couple, just brief statements before, which we, I did for the first 40B.
Yes, sir.
It's just in general, the way, and I know I didn't do this for 120, but just some sort of ground rules. In general, I think we agree that we like to try to keep these, if at all possible, to be completed before 9 p.m. just because I know in the past, some that go late, you know, that gets a little touchy. Everybody's a little bit tired, get hot and bothered. Not that I expect it, but I would ask that everybody that, that has a comment to make or a question, you know, please do so by, you know, identifying yourself, and please be respectful. I think I speak for the ZBA in just saying that. I think we all here want to do our job, listen to all the viewpoints, and, and just be respectful of each other. So, that was all. That was all I wanted to say before we got started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The good news is, I think, tonight we'll have no-
Well, one, I just wanted to add one thing, Brian, just for the project teams. We have four members here tonight. We, we're hopeful that we can Mullins rule in. A member or two is not here tonight, but we want to just make you aware that there's only four here tonight.
Understood.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
And, Mr. Chair, I think that we'll have no problem with 9 p.m. tonight, because our goal simply is to open the hearing, share with you updates on our discussions with the butters and other interested persons, get your very preliminary feedback on what we'll call Option B, and perhaps talk about the board at least issuing RFPs for peer review, and that's it.
Okay, yeah, agreed. And, and I, I sort of anticipated it would be something like that. I would also expect that any abutters that have anything that they want to bring to the table, you know, should be able to do so within a reasonable timeframe tonight. The other, the only other point I, I would ask, that I would ask of any meeting is, if you're coming to the microphone to make a point, please don't just come up and reemphasize what's already been made. That's all. But, having said all that, do you want it, you have a, you want to start with a, a presentation of?
Yes, very, very brief.
Great, thank you.
Yep. We had submitted something to staff, just a couple of pages. So, the project that's been filed with you all would be the Alexandra at 250 Turnpike Road. There's an architectural rendering that is consistent with the layout and plan that is in front of you. But that's all I want to say about that approach, because if we'll go down, if you don't mind, a few slides to what we'll call Option B. What we wanted to share with this board and kind of explain a little bit is this approach, which entails 28 townhomes. As you see, it would be four buildings of six two-bedroom townhomes each, and then two duplexes that would be three bedrooms each. And the height of these structures would only be two stories, in contrast with the four-story building apartment house that I'll call Option A. This Option B in front of you is what we have been discussing outside of the public hearing with abutters, led by their counsel, Attorney St. John, John St. Andre. And those discussions between Mr. Ferris and Attorney St. Andre have been very productive so far. But with this approach, again, there'd be lesser height. The septic field would be in a similar location to the apartment house, which is the sort of yellow rectangle to the left. Yes, thank you. The red rectangle just shows you where the apartment house would have its relative location. Yes, thank you. That's right. And taking a step back, with both approaches, access to the, this area would be via Route 9. You see here a potential access driveway that is outlined in blue, and it, at the end, would have a roundabout. This plan provides for eight sort of guest parking spaces that you see kind of going off the access driveway. And aside from that, parking would be in each unit's driveway. And that's how we get there. Unlike the apartment house approach, which has a total bedroom count in the 80s, this approach has only 60 bedrooms total. And so, it's also less dense in that sense. Not only is it shorter, it is fewer bedrooms. And with that reduction in bedrooms, there is a, a expected reduction in the size of the septic system that would be needed. So, it would be about a third smaller than the apartment house approach. And that's the, the polygon you see. And that's really it in terms of, you know, kicking things off. With, again, this is what we've been preliminarily discussing with the neighbors. And with that said, I just wanted to hand it to Mr. Ferris if he had any additional remarks, just as, by way of introduction.
Good evening. This is David Ferris. Thanks for the time this evening. John St. Andre is sitting to my right. He's been the lead neighborhood advocate that we've worked constructively with for about two years, and I think he kind of brought a pretty big, big breakthrough that was ironically an idea by John Palmer to sort of mimic another project that was Meeting House Lane in Southborough. And, and really, we listen to the neighbors' feedback, and all these neighbors are super reasonable, nice people. They're, have a, you know, development going in their backyard, so it's not ideal for any of them. But we're trying to kind of put forward a plan where we could get their broad support. And I wouldn't want to misrepresent or mischaracterize in any way, and John can speak directly at his appropriate time, that I think there's some preliminary buy-in, is the word I would use, to the concept of townhomes over the larger structure. And so, there's no commitment, I think, from the neighbors yet that this plan would pass muster with their, their consent or their agreement. And I want to be very clear about that. But I think there's a very good spirit of cooperation where if we can iron out some of the details of trees that are going to remain and all those finer points with this kind of a project, it would get the buy-in as the least sort of impactful project. it would get the buy-in as the least sort of impactful project for them directly. So, we're at the edge of financial feasibility in making this project work with the size of the units. We've done a lot of cost analysis and a lot of rent studies, et cetera, and we're kind of at the smallest footprint we could possibly kind of make this thing financially worth the effort of the site costs, et cetera. So, John's been very reasonable. The neighbors have been very reasonable. Fred, who's one of the most impacted Butters we've met with directly, and he's here tonight, and he could talk in any capacity he would want. John, as you got a letter, Palmer is out of town, but he did want to put in a blanket, "I'm not for the big building." And, and I think that, that speaks for all the neighbors who feel that way. And so we've really put this forward as a preliminary purely-concept plan. And before we were to go to the next iteration, for lack of a better term, flush 150, 200,000 of engineering down the toilet, which would be the prior plan, we really wanted to hear from the ZBA, like, we kind of see if the neighbors feel better about this plan, we would broadly get behind it. Because the underlying central issue of this entire project is whether or not there's a legal restriction. And you have your counsel here tonight who could give you that guidance. And from our standpoint, we did put what I would consider a safety valve to be able to produce this project, whether or not that land is restricted. And that is the 125 Parkerville Road lot that you see that we own that says 250 Turnpike LLC. And so, if we were to get the very strict interpretation that we don't want to lift the restriction, we would cite the building on that. We would still utilize the excess land for the septic, parking, et cetera. And we believe it doesn't fit in character with the community, in terms of it's on Parkerville Road. Everybody would pass it. It would be a, a tall structure in really a neighborhood cross-through street. And so we think this is the best compromise to achieve some objective of meeting the housing affordability in, in the community, but also the least impact. The other ideas that we did float, and we've talked, you know, for almost two years with the neighbors, is the idea of doing some sort of land transfer where they would gain, if we were to use the original concept, some of the land that is our land, that they would, we would attach to each of the lots to create permanent screening that they could control. But I really feel like there's a very strong resistance for the four-story rectangle building in the middle of their backyard, and I get it. So I think that this is the concept plan, and we, we think it's the best compromise that we can give the neighbors and still make it financially affordable.
Okay.
Yep.
One 40B note on the math. As you know, from last year's subsized housing inventory, the town is at least 77 housing units short of reaching 10%. And so, you know, Option A would be 60 rental apartments that would go toward that. With this approach, to be clear, it is 28 rental townhomes that would go toward the number.
So it's rental?
Yes.
Yep.
All 28 would count, but they would be rental, not ownership. Thank you.
And, and sorry, you said, how many in Option A? 60?
Oh, sorry, 56.
56.
Is that plan? 56.
What is this again?
28.
28.
24 two-bedrooms and four three-bedrooms.
Okay. Okay. First of all, I, I applaud you for doing the right thing here and working with the Butters. I appreciate that. I think the board appreciates that. I'm sure the Butters do. Mr. St. Andre, did you want to, do you have anything you wanted to say at this, at this moment?
John St. Andre, 14 Skyler Drive. I live in the neighborhood. You can't see my house on the lot, but it's within throwing distance, I think. But I have been representing the Butters and the neighbors, quite a large group, for over two years. It's, it's studded out pretty contentious. We believe we have the legal right, property rights, to prevent any building on that lot at all. We've been fighting back and forth. Finally, it seems that we, I am cautiously optimistic that the neighborhood, not everyone in the neighborhood, but most everyone in the neighborhood could get behind the townhouse concept if it's done right. What we need to see is, we need to see the plans, the details, the, the specifics of what it is that's being proposed. Mr. Ferris has been upfront recently. We met, we talked. He's willing to sit down with us and iron out all the details, tell us what he's looking for. We could tell him what we're looking for, and ultimately, we're hoping maybe we can come to an agreement. It looks as though, well, I'm cautiously optimistic that we can. The four-story apartment building is a non-starter. I understood that tonight would be to, for the purpose of getting a feedback from the board, to see whether or not the board would, could embrace a concept like this. So I, I told the neighbors, we're not going to be presenting our legal rights arguments against the four-story building. We're not fighting tonight. Tonight's a kind of a put-the-swords-down night and go to the back room and see if we can come to an agreement. So I asked the neighbors not to come. They didn't have to come. I had a presentation ready to go. I'm not going to present it if it would be okay, because I don't think it would be productive. I think we're at a point now where we'd like to maybe push this thing ahead, have a chance to sit down, get the plans, the details worked out, and come back and hopefully say, "We've got a deal on this." So that's about where we stand tonight.
Okay. All right. Mike, you have anything?
No, I, I kind of echo- Thanks. I echo your thoughts that, you know, we always encourage, whether it's a developer and the neighbors, to actually work collaboratively and hopefully, you know, if no one's happy, then that's a win, if that makes sense. But at the same time, I just want to be thoughtful about the original 40B application, that timetable, and then, to me, this transition point. And I just want to make sure we're not running afoul of any of our dates, timelines, or anything with this kind of change of circumstance. I wouldn't think so, but I just don't, I don't want to think things. I want to know things.
Well, certainly from a time perspective, doing this early is-
Yes.
-helpful. They're free to do an amendment.
Certainly.
That this particular amendment, in one respect, is going to require them to notify mass housing.
With the diminution of units.
Different, different housing type. So from garden-style to townhouses.
Ah, I wouldn't have thought that.
But that's perfunctory.
Okay.
We don't have to stop what we're doing. Mass housing is going to say, "Fine, we'll pick that up at final approval stage anyway." It's an obligation that they have to do. They can copy us on that. So, but otherwise, the timeline stays the same.
Does it matter about the number of units? That was more my, the, the, when they submitted the application, it was X, and now it's Y, and is-
No, you're, you're always free to, to change the number of units or dodge and weave however you want. The only requirement here is, well, the, the board could decide what, which it, which it likes or what it wants to see here. But the only requirement here to sync this up is to check in with mass housing.
Okay. Yep. I just didn't want to miss something.
Yep. No, it's fine.
Yeah, I, I, well, I guess, I mean, in terms, in terms of the timeline, if what we, what we're all embracing is Plan B, we're, we're sort of stuck in terms of going for peer review, right?
That's it.
So.
Yeah.
Well, I think-
It's, it's a little bit similar to the other one in that, you know, we, we can go out and ask for them, but, I mean, a lot of that's based on plans, which right now you don't have.
Well, we agree. I mean, it took a bit of time on the other 40B just to get a response, you know. So we'd like you to, you know, get that process. We wouldn't send it out-
Right.
-until we had a Plan A or a Plan B. They only can review one set of plans.
Correct.
We wouldn't ask them to review two.
Right.
But if you could do the RFP process, we'd appreciate it.
Okay.
You know, not commit to that until we give you a final set of plans, whether it's this or something else. This is a preliminary plan.
Right.
And I think anybody looking at it knows it's-
It's preliminary.
Preliminary is, it's very preliminary.
Very.
Very.
Even, even more preliminary than normal 40B.
Is there another level of preliminary?
Preliminary.
Here's a, here's a sketch.
Beyond this is St. Andre's comments about discussing it. You know, we have to take a look at it and tweak it, I'm sure.
Right.
You know, and so that will be concomitant with discussions with the neighbors. Okay?
Okay.
All right. It's just the idea of townhouses, V to V.
Right. Okay.
And lesser units and that, that type of thing.
Anything else, Mike?
No.
Okay. Doug?
I would just echo. I mean, I think I definitely appreciate the collaboration or the discussions that are going on. That's very helpful. You know, from my perspective, a variety of housing types are important, right? So from that perspective, townhomes resonate, you know. You know, it's a better scale. It's more in keeping with Southborough. The big question was whether it was rental or for sale, because obviously it changes the number pretty dramatically for the town. And we'd only get the, you know, if it was for sale, we only get to 25%. That was affordable. So, so I think that's an important aspect for the town. You know, and, I mean, no, again, it is preliminary, but, you know, it feels just better in keeping with it. So, I think we all have the same ringtone. So, but yeah, anyway, so I mean, you know, my initial thoughts are, I appreciate your collaboration, you know. I mean, again, those are my initial thoughts. I, you know, I'd love to hear from the neighbors more as the process goes forward. But it feels like, it seems like, again, to be used the words optimistic, it seems like it's going in the right direction. And I do think for Southborough, it'd be great to have some townhomes, you know, compared to flats. I mean, we need housing of all types, but it's unique to be able to get rental townhomes. And so, especially again, to, you know, a place like Southborough, so.
Paul?
I'm not, like, used to having us be asked a question of what we think, like, I, to be honest, I don't think we're really in a, like, that's not our role, to be determining what someone should do with their development property.
I get it.
I mean, it's nice for you guys to ask us what we think, and, but that's not typically a, a ZBA role, but, I mean-
I get it.
Again, and all my time sitting on this, we've, I've never, we've never been asked, nor, I mean, we've also been advised not, not to advise.
Right.
And there's been a lot of stuff that's come before me that I'm like, "That's god-awful," but I can't sit here and say, "I don't like your, your architectural design." Or, you know, "Are we going to grant the variance?" They're not going to grant the variance. So, and so in that regard, I'm not, like, that's, that's kind of unusual for me. But I, I guess if you want to ask me personally, I think townhouses are, are, are very nice. And I think would be less, you know, aesthetically nicer, less impact. Obviously, we're talking less density too. So, if the initial feedback from, from a Butters and townfolk is, is more positive for that than something else, then-
If that makes sense for the petition.
So selfish, if it makes, makes our job easier, then, you know, then, then, yeah, great. I mean, I think that sounds like a, I mean, again, yeah, sure, it sounds like a great, a great concept. I did have one question that I didn't follow. What, what was the, the part about the Parkerville lot that's, that would have been in play with A, but not in play with B, or?
Can we, like, my suggestion would be, if we could table that, that's, you know, there's a difference of opinion as to whether or not there's some restriction and you have a right to enforce it.
I'm a, we don't have to discuss it tonight.
Right.
But we are gonna, we do have to discuss it. So regardless of the project, now, my read on this has been that if it just exists in a prior permit, and it doesn't exist elsewhere in the registry in terms of that restriction, then essentially, the amendment power exists with this board. It's the same par, it's not the situation we had in 120 where it was a, it's a different parcel. This is this parcel. If it, if that restriction resides elsewhere in, in, in the title that might invoke the, the Mendon Gray Wolf case, which is kind of a unique case, then we'd have to examine that. I, I don't, seeing what I saw only in the town's records, I didn't see a huge issue provided that you have, are going to have to actually ask us to do something, which is, I, Brian, I, I had mentioned that to you previously in an email, but I think you're going to have to address it.
Okay, but-
Either with either, with either project. And I haven't seen it, and I'd be interested in what other people think. I haven't seen a barrier here, but it is something that is going to have to be addressed.
Okay. Given the general kumbaya tonight, I, you know, would address it. We will address it in a formal way.
Yeah. Perfect.
And that doesn't waive anybody's rights. You know, Jay hasn't rendered an opinion in, in terms of, because he hasn't, you know, we'll address it, you know, and then we'll resolve it.
Sure.
You know, I just-
I just didn't want to lose sight of it at all. I don't-
But I don't want to get into it tonight, because it's not going to take us anywhere tonight.
Fair.
It's going to be a bunch of snippets.
So we're, we're gonna, as long as we see a nice flowery memo from your office, Lou, on this, then-
No, but the, the only reason I'm saying is, look, you mentioned about keeping it short, and we're not keeping it short just to get out of it.
Oh, are you?
No, no, and I appreciate that. But we're trying to get, introduce the board at 10,000 feet to what we're doing.
Right.
And to your comment, we don't expect that you're endorsing it tonight, or anybody else on the board. We just look for your comments. And I've gone to enough board meetings, and so has Jay, where no matter what, you know, somebody in the board says, "This is terrible, and I'll never approve it," okay? That's a good thing to know, all right? You know, I don't hold it against the guy for telling me that. So, you know, you haven't approved it, you haven't committed to approving it, you know, but you haven't told us it was a terrible idea. So, we'll proceed between now and the next time that you hear this substantively, to work with the neighbors and come back with the best package that we can. And, and we'll try and, you know, iron out the wrinkles, if there are any.
Yeah. No, I, I, I think we understand, this is your, this is the opening hearing. We don't expect to go through detail, chapter and verse. We, we know that. Yeah, lesson you're, I mean, it really is.
Yeah.
Because what you're presenting is not-
Yeah, it's not even a plan.
A plan.
Yeah.
I, but again, I'm going to reiterate. I mean, I, I, and I think the board believes the same way, that it's, it's a, it's definitely a better outcome to do what you've done, which is to work with the Butters. I credit the Butters as well for, for doing it. I think in general, just to make my opinion clear, I, I think, I'm in, I'm in favor of the townhomes, if, if that's something that makes the neighbors happier. I mean, I don't-
Yeah.
You, you, we, we, you could go down the prickly path of saying, "We're gonna, we're gonna do this four stories, whether you like it or not." And everyone's going to be that much worse for wear, having gone through that. So, I would, I would say the board definitely would say, "We, we view this favorably." Obviously, we have to have all the details, and you're going to work them out with your Butters, but I think this is a, it's a great step.
Devil's in the detail.
Devil is in the details. You are correct about that. Having said all that, was there, was there, was that all you wanted to present tonight, Mr. Charville?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Because I, I do see you came prepared with maps. I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah.
Is it applicable?
Well, not all of it, so that's the problem I have. I, I did take a look at this.
Yep, whatever you want to do.
So, what, what I have in hand here is, this is Doris Cahill, she's a ZBA member. She's not here this evening. She had reviewed, you know, the project, and she has comments here. I'm being a little bit hesitant here. She wanted that, that it read, but I think-
I don't think the whole thing needs to be read.
There's a lot of things in here that just don't apply right now.
Yeah, but I think that it would seem that that's for a-
Different plot.
Subsequent meeting.
Yeah.
Because I, I don't think we're at that level of-
Well, well, some of her comments are about what Mr. Talman already brought up.
You can give us a copy of it, and you can read it later in another meeting, you know, if, if, if it's still applicable, you know, type of thing.
But, this is David speaking. Just total transparency, when you spend two years meeting with all the neighbors and you get to know them on a personal level, it kind of impacts how you draw these plans and what you're doing. And I think the, you know, we wanted, we got good sounding feedback from you all tonight. But I think the ask, I think, if there would be one from the applicant, would be that you and Jay, meaning your board and Jay Caucus, because we're going to spend the time and money to draw this, consistent with what we, feedback we get from the neighbors in the site, as you kind of roughly see, in that location. And if you come to the conclusion that, you know, this is a bright letter, red, hard stop, based on Jay's feedback and our interpretation, then I'd, I'd rather not spend that time and money all over again. And so, you know, that, that, there's no point in going down the 125 Parkerville Road thing if we, if we, if we get to a point where you and Jay have already met privately and determined there is a path for your authority to lift any perceived restriction. So, it's just, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but I really would, would, would want to spend my money really responsibly on this next drawing, because I think we're close with the neighbors. But I need to know that, you know, your counsel and you have the authority to go ahead and, and get past that restriction.
So what, what are you looking for? Are you looking for us to just say that we don't think it's a problem? I mean, I'm very convinced of Talman.
No, I don't think, I don't think I need that from the board. I think we need to hear from your town council at some point that you guys have opined and looked at it so that we don't spend a whole, you know, couple of months redrawing this or weeks. or weeks if we fast-track it and engineer an entire plan on a lot that, you know, we come back later and we say, well, we actually took a closer look at the legal stuff and we don't think we can even authorize putting it here. Because we just don't want a board bounce this time.
Right, right.
Not just being totally transparent.
And we don't either, so.
So I definitely don't think there's a board bounce here.
Right.
Issue here, but I do think it's your burden through Lou or Brian or your, your team to give us their, your full analysis. I've looked just at the, the local permits. I think it's incumbent upon your team to make sure that there's nothing, I mentioned a case, it's an important case, it relies upon a companion restriction in the title that was alongside a restriction in a permit. That seems like it's a different issue here, but I haven't done any title. So I think you have to look at the title to make sure that there's nothing else that would cause a restriction. I'm not doing that. I will peer review it, but that's your burden. Again, looking at it from a high level, I didn't see an issue because it was something I flagged early on. But I also didn't, had just a half a loaf of the requisite information, just stuff that resided in Town Hall and not in the registry.
I'm, so Jay, um, the suggestion is, can we pick an interim date irrespective, you know, peer review, where the board, you, you know, we can get you.
Send, send me your memo, Lou. I'll look at it in real time.
No, no, I understand that, but at the end of the day, it's, it's the board's decision, not town council.
Right.
And so how do we get to that point? I'm happy to send you a memo.
When I, when I review your memo and do my research, I'll give the board an opinion. I'm trying not to rely on a total lot of formality. The level of communication between your office and Brian's office and me and David and Mike and Laura has been really good.
Okay.
So let's just deal with it the way we've been dealing with it.
We'll see what we get with that, and then we decide what the next step.
Sure.
And I, that's what I was trying to do.
Right.
Because in fairness to Jay and to the applicant, you know.
You don't want to chase your tail.
Yes. But we'll take care of it in the next, you know, few weeks and.
Okay.
You know, and, you know, I know Jay will, you know, pay, pay attention to it quickly, pretty quickly.
Okay. But in terms of the, of the, of the process, then we would need, since we did open a hearing, we would need to continue it to a, to a date, right? So I don't know what's going to be, what's your, what's a reasonable time? Well, I mean, I, fairness, some of it's on you, Lou, right, as far as the timetable goes to work with.
I know that the board has a scheduled meeting on August 21st, and I was either going to suggest that date or a special meeting on Wednesday, August 28th, as the next date for this hearing. And our thought would be that the discussions with the abutters continue and that we have civil engineering of the full plan set occur over the month of July, and that by the end of the month, we're submitting those sheets to the board, such that if the RFP process is complete and there is consensus with the abutters, that we'd be asking the board to have peer review begin in August of the updated approach. And then we're here on August 21st or 28th.
I can, I can tell you the 28th won't work for me, so. Yeah, no.
The 28th?
28th is not good for me.
Who's the first date?
The 21st, where we, we have a meeting already. Or, well, no, 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 I shouldn't say that. It's a regular scheduled date. We don't have anything.
It's on the schedule.
Yeah.
That's it.
You won't know. Right, right, exactly.
And why don't we do the 21st?
I may have an issue on the 21st.
Okay.
I don't know what I'm doing tomorrow.
Doug?
It's just late August. That week, likely not. I could, might be, so I should be able to join remotely.
I was going to say.
Yeah, I could probably be in person, but I could join remotely.
Yeah.
I can make that work.
I, I know I'm going to be somewhere.
I'll make sure I'm online.
That's really not going to be possible. Okay.
But the 21st is when we're, we're scheduled. That's our.
We, we have nothing on the agenda at the moment.
Nothing on the agenda.
Not yet, but Monday is the filing deadline, so I will know by Monday.
Okay.
But I haven't heard of anything coming my way.
Well, in, in, considering what we were talking about earlier, should we make it a 7:15 meeting on the 21st? Now, that way, if there's something else that comes up, that's a.
Oh, yeah.
You know, a side setback waiver, we can, we can, we can do that at 7:00.
I'm good with that.
I didn't even hear what you said, anyway.
Well, I, I was just, I was just.
Just, just. Okay, good. I agree.
Okay, so. I mean, I would normally say, I don't, if there's, if there's anybody else who has something to say, but I think Mr. St. Andre made it clear, he kind of felt like you've spoken with the neighbors and you're kind of in favor of, let's roll and see more details, correct?
Exactly.
Right, right, okay. All right. Did I miss anything, Jay?
No, I think we're on a good track.
Okay.
Just since you were asking our opinion, on that concept you have for Plan B, and it's a, it's a drive-in with a, with a roundabout, that would obviously be to code for public safety and fire. I just want to make sure that's, because that'd be my first question in the next meeting, so I'll just.
Yeah, the goal behind that was.
I'll get that out of the way now.
To provide any even fire access from Parkerville, Parkerville is a.
Okay. Yeah, you know.
Just a little roundabout. Just want to make sure it's a big enough turning radius to get the.
We'll provide the, you know, template.
I had one sort of detail-like question, and it was more relevant to Option A, but in general, I'm just trying to understand the elevation there, like where you have, is that, is that actually a descending elevation or is it a higher elevation relative to the neighbors as terms of where the homes are? Oh, okay, I'm getting, okay.
James Jude.
I was literally like.
Yeah, sorry.
And the turnaround circle is below, well below, all the abutters on Sarsen Stone. It's the units closest to the south boundary are at roughly the same elevation as, as the nearest homes on Skylar.
So, yeah, Skylar is generally up higher, right? Yeah.
Much less so than, than Sarsen Stone.
Okay, yeah, okay. Sorry, it was just.
Yep.
I can see the lines. I'm going, all right, well, which way, which way are they going? Okay. Did anybody else have any other questions or, all right? So you, you're in agreement with the, the 21st?
Please, it's 7:15.
Do we have to, we have to vote to continue that? Yeah. So we need to. See, I told you she's the only one that was going on.
Um, just to address peer review, I wasn't sure if the board wanted to vote to authorize you to do that.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We do want to do that. That's an excellent point and why we need you here. So what we did for previous 40Bs is I need, if you agree, the board to vote to approve, authorize me to request peer review from, you know, some of the same, probably the same folks that we did before. But we actually have to take a vote on that.
Make a motion to authorize you to provide peer review.
I will second that.
Okay, motion has been made to authorize the chair to seek RFPs for peer review. With a second, all in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye. All right, thank you. Thank you for the reminder. And I think we're, we need to, we need to have a motion, sorry.
Close the public hearing.
No, no, to continue.
Continue, that's right.
To August 21st.
I'd love to close the public hearing.
At 7:15, yeah. We're, we're in trouble if we do that, yeah.
That's too, too excited.
I liked the way you did that.
Yeah, you like that?
Yeah, no, that, that's Paul's move.
Trying to sneak that in every now and then.
So, um, do you want to make that, I suppose I can make the motion, but I usually don't.
Make a motion to continue the meeting until August 21st.
At 7:15. Yep, okay.
I'll second that.
Second, all right. Motion to continue to August 21st at 7:15 has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
So you, so you have the 21st, yep. All right, thanks you too. And we have, the only thing, the only thing you kind of put on the agenda was what we have coming up, right?
Yes.
Which I myself need some reminders, so I appreciate that.
Sure. So just updates, oh, really quick. Five Thayer, we did a variance in November. This has just come up, so the condition, one of the conditions of that approval was that they needed to receive a letter from a professional engineer stating that.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Jay.
Stating that the location of the sheds would not, I can.
I remember that, yeah.
The locations of the sheds wouldn't impact the maintenance of the stormwater features in the backyard and all that. The owners sent me a letter stating that, but it's from a professional land surveyor and not a professional engineer. So I wanted to get your opinion on how to move forward with that because the condition states professional engineer. And then also, once we have a letter that satisfies the condition, if you guys would like to take a vote on that, just to kind of close it out.
Like, take a vote that the land surveyor's opinion is adequate?
Just if and when we have a letter.
Whoever's opinion comes through.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess the first issue is, the condition says professional engineer. The letter I have is from a professional land surveyor, which is.
I see those as two different things. We said professional engineer. It should be a professional engineer.
Very, very different.
Okay.
I don't think we should let that slide.
Nope.
Okay.
So.
All right, so I will get back in touch with them. I talked with Melissa Danza, who's our conservation agent, who made the recommendation for the condition. She's in agreement with you, so we'll touch base with the homeowner and deal with that. When they do supply a letter from a professional engineer, do you guys want to vote on that as this is something that fulfills the condition, just as a formal acknowledgement?
Can we, well, I guess the first thing.
Not, not tonight.
Correct, but can we have a town department review it and give their opinion?
In other words, Melissa.
So we can have Melissa because she's the one.
She's the conservation.
Yeah, that way, because then I'd like to know that before we vote on it.
Okay.
I don't have any issue voting on it. I don't know, I defer to you guys. You're on the board longer. Do we need to?
I don't, I don't ever, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to vote on if something was like, you know, requested in part of the decision, then it just needs to be submitted.
And they meet the decision.
Yeah.
And they, and they fulfill the obligation, especially with the conservation.
Right.
I, I would think it would be.
And like, to your point, like, I'm not, I'm not qualified to, I'm not qualified to, to decipher the findings of an engineer's letter.
So.
I should be, but I'm not.
Yeah, I definitely agree. So I think it'd be, so if they're, if the conservation commission person is good with it, then.
They're working.
Then we're good.
Okay, so what I'll do is if, if and when we get one, I will submit it to Melissa. I will have her write a formal memo. I will add both to the file, and then I will just add it to an agenda as a discussion item, just to let you guys know.
Awesome.
Does that work?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right. Other than that, upcoming meetings, we have July 17th. We have a special permit application for 337 Turnpike Road, and then we have a.
Where is it, 3?
337 Turnpike Road.
Okay.
And then we have a status update scheduled for Park Central.
Also on the 17th.
Also on the 17th. So we had touched on this briefly at our last meeting, but Paul, if you could attend just for the special permit, and then you can recuse yourself for Park Central. Jamie will not be at that meeting also, just so you guys are aware.
I think I asked this at the last meeting too, because I got all the addresses mixed up. What, what is 337?
337 Turnpike Road. It's just a new special permit application for.
Oh, so that's not what we seen.
It's not, it's not a 40B.
Not 40B related at all.
And do we know what the update is?
No, I've heard nothing.
We're all in for a surprise.
Yes.
No.
Or disappointment.
No, that means they don't have any news.
They're going to keep going, keep picking at the can.
After that, we have July 31st. We continued 120 Turnpike 40B to July 31st.
Oh, yeah.
We will also have to hear a second, second special permit related to 337 Turnpike Road. So.
Second special permit.
So what they submitted is a special permit application for a use that is only allowed by special permit. They also need to submit a special permit application for two principal uses on one lot, which they have not done. They're planning to do tomorrow so that we can tie that into July 31st.
What are the two uses they want to do?
So the existing use is there's a warehouse with associated offices.
Yeah.
And the proposed use that they want to put in there is an adult daycare.
I thought you were going to say adult entertainment there for a second.
I swear to God, so did I.
My apology is very different.
I was just like, this is going to be hell.
You guys are in sync tonight.
Swear of God, I was just like, oh, God.
And then the only other thing that I have is August 21st, which we just continued to 50 Turnpike 2.